To the flag of the United States of America, the true republic which stands, To the flag of the United States of America, the true republic which stands, one nation, one nation, under God, in whose whole liberty and justice for all. under God, in whose whole liberty and justice for all.
All right, everybody, please be seated. Welcome to the Township of Oldbridge Zoning All right, everybody, please be seated. Welcome to the Township of Oldbridge Zoning Board of Adjustment meeting, April 18, 2024. Board of Adjustment meeting, April 18, 2024. A piece of paper. Adequate notice of this meeting of the Oldbridge Township Zoning Board A piece of paper. Adequate notice of this meeting of the Oldbridge Township Zoning Board of Adjustment has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, at least of Adjustment has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, at least 48 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting, by prominently posting in the municipal 48 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting, by prominently posting in the municipal complex an announcement giving the time, the date, the location, the agenda of this complex an announcement giving the time, the date, the location, the agenda of this meeting, also by mailing such announcement to the Home News and Tribune, filing a copy meeting, also by mailing such announcement to the Home News and Tribune, filing a copy of such announcement with the municipal clerk, and posting the agenda on the municipal website. of such announcement with the municipal clerk, and posting the agenda on the municipal website. Ms. Frachelli, could we have a roll call, please? Ms. Frachelli, could we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Ms. Andrews? Certainly. Ms. Andrews?
Present. Present.
Ms. Chevalier? Ms. Chevalier?
Here. Here.
Mr. Izzo? Mr. Izzo?
Here. Here.
Mr. Scogno? Mr. Scogno?
Here. Here.
Mr. Stoner? Mr. Stoner?
Here.
Here.
Ms. Testaverde? Ms. Testaverde?
Here. Here.
Chairman Sullivan? Chairman Sullivan?
Here. Here.
All right, as a matter of housekeeping, if you have a phone on, please silence it All right, as a matter of housekeeping, if you have a phone on, please silence it at this point so we don't interrupt the testimony this evening. The meeting is simultaneously at this point so we don't interrupt the testimony this evening. The meeting is simultaneously being conveyed over cable TV 15 here in the township, and it's also on YouTube Live. being conveyed over cable TV 15 here in the township, and it's also on YouTube Live. If you ever want to refer back to the meeting, you can do so by looking that up on YouTube. If you ever want to refer back to the meeting, you can do so by looking that up on YouTube. I thank you for your understanding. We're going to go in the order of the agenda if I thank you for your understanding. We're going to go in the order of the agenda if you happen to have a copy of it. Our first item on business tonight is Resolution 73-2023Z. you happen to have a copy of it. Our first item on business tonight is Resolution 73-2023Z. Sean DeLuca, Mr. Clancy. Sean DeLuca, Mr. Clancy?
Thank you. Yeah, this is an application that was heard a week or so ago at our last Thank you. Yeah, this is an application that was heard a week or so ago at our last meeting. This is for 10 Red Shaw Boulevard over in here in Oldbridge. So this was for meeting. This is for 10 Red Shaw Boulevard over in, here in Oldbridge. So this was for a three-season sunroom that was being placed on top of a deck. They were looking for a a three-season sunroom that was being placed on top of a deck. They were looking for a variance on this for maximum floor area ratio, D4. This was heard. It was approved by the variance on this for maximum floor area ratio, D4. This was heard. It was approved by the board, and there was, in addition to our usual conditions, the applicant is agreeing board, and there was, in addition to our usual conditions, the applicant is agreeing the sunroom will not be used as a living space. The sunroom will not have any climate the sunroom will not be used as a living space. The sunroom will not have any climate control or plumbing. Mr. Chairman, this is on for approval tonight. control or plumbing. Mr. Chairman, this is on for approval tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Clancy. Board members, you've heard the resolution. Someone move Thank you, Mr. Clancy. Board members, you've heard the resolution. Someone move it for adoption, please. it for adoption, please.
Testaverde. Testaverde.
I heard Chevalier, and I heard Ms. Testaverde. Roll call, please. I heard Chevalier, and I heard Ms. Testaverde. Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews? Ms. Andrews?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Chevalier? Ms. Chevalier?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Izzo? Mr. Izzo?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Scogno? Mr. Scogno?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Stoner? Mr. Stoner?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Testaverde? Ms. Testaverde?
Yes. Yes.
Chairman Sullivan? Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. All right, we'll go to applications now. The first one on our agenda is 79-2023Z. Yes. All right, we'll go to applications now. The first one on our agenda is 79-2023Z. That's Barbara Robinson Ramirez. The location of that is 85 Bennett Road in Oldbridge. The That's Barbara Robinson Ramirez. The location of that is 85 Bennett Road in Oldbridge. The applicant is looking to legitimize a 15 by 45-foot approximate deck. The deck is 1/4 applicant is looking to legitimize a 15 by 45-foot approximate deck. The deck is 1/4 foot outside the side yard property line where 10 is required. The public hearing foot outside the side yard property line where 10 is required. The public hearing for this application has been adjourned to May 16 without further notice. If you hear for this application has been adjourned to May 16 without further notice. If you hear on that matter tonight, it's not going to be heard. It'll be on the agenda May 16. on that matter tonight, it's not going to be heard. It'll be on the agenda May 16. Our next item is 04-2024Z, Geraldo Rivera. Okay, you can come up, sir. That's a medium Our next item is 04-2024Z, Geraldo Rivera. Okay, you can come up, sir. That's a medium high-density residential R6, block 15512, lot 613. The physical location's 18 Holly high-density residential R6, block 15512, lot 613. The physical location's 18 Holly Street. This is the applicant seeks to legitimize as a previously constructed 50 by 20 deck. Street. This is, the applicant seeks to legitimize as a previously constructed 50 by 20 deck. The deck is four foot from the property line where nine foot is required. Sir, are you The deck is four foot from the property line where nine foot is required. Sir, are you going to be the only one testifying this evening on your behalf? going to be the only one testifying this evening on your behalf?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Board attorney will swear you in, and at which time, you can actually take a Board attorney will swear you in, and at which time, you can actually take a seat seat right here and sit in front of that microphone. right here and sit in front of that microphone.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, go ahead. And if you push the button on there, it'll turn to green? Yeah, go ahead. And if you push the button on there, it'll turn to green? Okay, there we go. Okay, there we go.
Can you just raise your right hand for me? Do you solemnly swear any testimony Can you just raise your right hand for me? Do you solemnly swear any testimony you provide before the board will be the truth and the whole truth? you provide before the board will be the truth and the whole truth?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, put your hand down and just state your name for the record, sir. Okay, put your hand down and just state your name for the record, sir.
Geraldo Rivera. Geraldo Rivera.
Got it. Thank you. Got it. Thank you.
Mr. Rivera, I know you have an application here for a deck, obviously that you constructed, Mr. Rivera, I know you have an application here for a deck, obviously that you constructed, and it has an issue with a variance. What the board would like you to do is tell us and it has an issue with a variance. So what the board would like you to do is tell us what you did, how you did that, why you did that. Our professional is going to tell us what you did, how you did that, why you did that. Our professional is going to tell us why you need a variance. We may have some questions of you. The zoning officer may why you need a variance. We may have some questions of you. The zoning officer may have have some advice for us. The attorney may have some advice for us. We'll listen to some advice for us. The attorney may have some advice for us. We'll listen to that. that. After that juncture, we're going to ask to the public if anybody has a problem After that juncture, we're going to ask to the public if anybody has a problem with with this, anyone here tonight, if they want any comments, at which time, once I close this, anyone here tonight, if they want any comments, at which time, once I close the the public portion, I'm going to come back to you, and I'm going to ask you if you'd public portion, I'm going to come back to you, and I'm going to ask you if you'd like like me to take your vote, take a vote on your matter. Okay? me to take your vote, take a vote on your matter. Okay? So you're not represented by an attorney or a professional, so just go at your own So you're not represented by an attorney or a professional, so just go at your own pace. Tell us what happened, when it happened, and what brings you here tonight. pace. Tell us what happened, when it happened, and what brings you here tonight.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. First of all, I just want to say that I completely Okay, thank you, Chairman. First of all, I just want to say that I completely respect respect all ordinance, all ordinances of this township, and I appreciate everyone's all ordinances of this township, and I appreciate everyone's diligence in what they do here. diligence in what they do here. As far as my deck is concerned, this permit was pulled As far as my deck is concerned, this permit was pulled in 2021. Very excited about it, in 2021. Very excited about it, building it, and as I'm building and going, it just building it, and as I'm building and going, it just seemed right that I just pushed it seemed right that I just pushed it a little bit further. Unfortunately, I was under the a little bit further. Unfortunately, I was under the assumption that we needed to be assumption that we needed to be three foot away from the property line, so that's why three foot away from the property line, so that's why I got so close. And when it was, I got so close. And when it was, when the zoning officer came, he notified me that when the zoning officer came, he notified me that it was not in ordinance with the township, it was not in ordinance with the township, so I went ahead and filled out a variance so I went ahead and filled out a variance to try to make things right. to try to make things right.
Okay. Do you have any exhibits that you want to show us, any pictures or anything Okay. Do you have any exhibits that you want to show us, any pictures or anything along that line? along that line?
No, just that I can assure that all my neighbors are. No, just that I can assure that all my neighbors are...
Okay, we'll go to our professional. Mr. Hollan? Okay, we'll go to our professional. Mr. Hollan?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, so he's here just seeking a single C variance for Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, so he's here just seeking a single C variance for the the rear yard deck. This is one of those in the R6 zone where the setback is determined rear yard deck. This is one of those in the R6 zone where the setback is determined on on the height of the deck, which is about a little bit over three feet high, so it the height of the deck, which is about a little bit over three feet high, so it requires requires a minimum nine-foot setback. Kind of going off what Mr. Rivera said, he, I a minimum nine-foot setback. Kind of going off what Mr. Rivera said, he, I believe, believe he secured a zoning permit and construction permit in 2021 for a deck, and then kind he secured a zoning permit and construction permit in 2021 for a deck, and then kind of of as he built the deck, he, you know, kind of went above the scope of the work, which as he built the deck, he, you know, kind of went above the scope of the work, which incurred a variance with that rear yard. So just one single C variance in that rear incurred a variance with that rear yard. So just one single C variance in that rear yard, Chairman. yard, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hollan. Board members, questions on my left? Thank you, Mr. Hollan. Board members, questions on my left? On my right? Mr. Clancy? On my right? Mr. Clancy?
So it looks like nine foot was required and four feet is what you have currently, So it looks like nine foot was required and four feet is what you have currently, right? right?
Yes. Yes.
And in order to, if you had to bring it into, you know, in accordance with the And in order to, if you had to bring it into, you know, in accordance with the nine foot, it would actually require you to peel back the deck and remove some footings nine foot, it would actually require you to peel back the deck and remove some footings and put new footings in, correct? and put new footings in, correct?
That is correct. That is correct.
To accomplish that. So it's a little bit of a hardship for you to bring it into To accomplish that. So it's a little bit of a hardship for you to bring it into into line with what's actually required there. Is that kind of the reason for the application? into line with what's actually required there. Is that kind of the reason for the application?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Hollan, does it seem that you visited the property, I assume? Mr. Hollan, does it seem that you visited the property, I assume?
No, I believe it was a code enforcement officer that was out there on a complaint. No, I believe it was a code enforcement officer that was out there on a complaint.
Okay. But from the survey, it looks like it does fit, but setback changes because Okay. But from the survey, it looks like it does fit, but setback changes because of the zone and the height, right? of the zone and the height, right?
Correct, yes. Correct, yes.
You have anything else you want to tell us? We're familiar with these situations, You have anything else you want to tell us? We're familiar with these situations, and then what happens, I guess the homeowners, they don't realize, what he was saying was and then what happens, I guess the homeowners, they don't realize, what he was saying was because of this lot's size, the setback can change. It's not always consistent. Like, because of this lot's size, the setback can change. It's not always consistent. Like, your house might be one, but somebody else's house might be longer or shorter. So that's your house might be one, but somebody else's house might be longer or shorter. So that's why it's good to check with the zoning office before projects, and that way you can figure why it's good to check with the zoning office before projects, and that way you can figure that out. You don't waste a lot of time. I don't know what the board's going to vote, that out. You don't waste a lot of time. I don't know what the board's going to vote, but, you know, if it votes against, then you'd have to chop up your deck. So I don't but, you know, if it votes against, then you'd have to chop up your deck, so I don't think that would probably look good there either, but you have to bear those things think that would probably look good there either, but you have to bear those things in mind, and I appreciate you being here tonight. I'm going to go to the public and in mind, and I appreciate you being here tonight. I'm going to go to the public and say, anybody else in the public want to be heard on this matter? say, anybody else in the public want to be heard on this matter? Okay, I guess they're all leaving. I'm going to close the public portion. Any final Okay, I guess they're all leaving. I'm going to close the public portion. Any final comments from you, sir? comments from you, sir?
I appreciate you guys. I do. I appreciate you guys. I do.
Okay. This is a matter the board's seen many times before, and this would be a Okay. This is a matter the board's seen many times before, and this would be a C1 hardship? C1 hardship?
Yeah, that's what it sounds like, yes. Yeah, that's what it sounds like, yes.
Be granted under C1 hardship should you agree to allow for the variance. Does Be granted under C1 hardship should you agree to allow for the variance. Does someone want to move this for the C1 variance? someone want to move this for the C1 variance?
Testaverde will move it. Testaverde will move it.
Is there a second? Izzo? Is there a second? Izzo? I think it was, I think it was Ms. Andrews. Roll call, please. I think it was, I think it was Ms. Andrews. Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews? Ms. Andrews?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Chevalier? Ms. Chevalier?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Izzo? Mr. Izzo?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Scogno? Mr. Scogno?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Stoner? Mr. Stoner?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Testaverde? Ms. Testaverde?
Yes. Yes.
Chairman Sullivan? Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. It's great when people, you know, do things for their home, it improves their Yes. It's great when people, you know, do things for their home, it improves their value, and it makes the community stronger. Just check before, if you need any permits, value, and it makes the community stronger. Just check before, if you need any permits, this resolution will be ready by our next meeting, and then you'll be kind of legal this resolution will be ready by our next meeting, and then you'll be kind of legal as long as you provide it proper permits. If you don't, please call the building department. as long as you provide it proper permits. If you don't, please call the building department. I don't know if he has or he has not. I don't know if he has or he has not.
Yeah, once the resolution, once it's signed, Maureen will reach out to you, bring Yeah, once the resolution, once it's signed, Maureen will reach out to you, bring that resolution either to my office or the building office, because you still need to that resolution either to my office or the building office, because you still need to legitimize the permit, and that resolution gives me approval to approve it. legitimize the permit, and that resolution gives me approval to approve it.
Understood. Understood.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Thank you, Mr. Rivera.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys.
All right. Have a good night. All right. Have a good night. Okay, the next item on the agenda, Board 052024Z, Michael Harris. This is in a low-density Okay, the next item on the agenda, Board 052024Z, Michael Harris. This is in a low-density residential R20, block 11246, lot 2.15. Physical location's 10 Sutton Court in Oldbridge. residential R20, block 11246, lot 2.15. Physical location's 10 Sutton Court in Oldbridge. Front overhang and rear aluminum roof requiring C variance. Applicant proposes a 6.7-foot Front overhang and rear aluminum roof requiring C variance. Applicant proposes a 6.7-foot by 29-foot front overhang and a 16 by 18 rear yard aluminum roof attached. The rear by 29-foot front overhang and a 16 by 18 rear yard aluminum roof attached. The rear yard aluminum roof is proposed at 41.5 feet approximately from the rear yard property yard aluminum roof is proposed at 41.5 feet approximately from the rear yard property line where 50 minimum is required. Mr. Harris? line where 50 minimum is required. Mr. Harris?
Good evening. Good evening.
Again, are you going to be the only one testifying before the board this evening? Is, again, are you going to be the only one testifying before the board this evening?
That is correct. That is correct.
Board attorney will swear you in. Board attorney will swear you in.
Just raise your right hand for me. Do you solemnly swear any testimony you provide Just raise your right hand for me. Do you solemnly swear any testimony you provide before the board will be the truth and the whole truth? before the board will be the truth and the whole truth?
I do. I do.
Excellent. Put your hand down and just state your name for the record, please. Excellent. Put your hand down and just state your name for the record, please.
Michael A. Harris. Michael A. Harris.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Harris, you heard me explain to the other gentleman that was in here what Mr. Harris, you heard me explain to the other gentleman that was in here what the board wants to hear. There's certain proofs that need to go on the record in order the board wants to hear. There's certain proofs that need to go on the record in order for us to have, to legitimize or to grant variances. So we'd ask you to do the same for us to have, to legitimize or to grant variances. So we'd ask you to do the same thing at your own pace. Tell us what you're looking to do, why you're going to do that. thing at your own pace. Tell us what you're looking to do, why you're going to do that. Once again, I'll go to the zoning officer, and then we may have some questions. Same Once again, I'll go to the zoning officer, and then we may have some questions. Same process. We'll have a open, the meeting, open to the public for comment, and then process. We'll have a open, the meeting, open to the public for comment, and then we'll come back to you, and I'll see if you want us to vote. we'll come back to you, and I'll see if you want us to vote.
Okay, folks. Last year, I was diagnosed with skin cancer. I had two surgeries on my back to remove cancer and also precancer cells on my scalp. So I like the outdoors, and I like to sit outside in my rear in front of my home. So I decided with my wife to put a overhang in the front and an aluminum overhang in the rear of the house to protect myself from the ultraviolet rays. So I contacted several contractors, and you get different answers from every contractor. Some contractors say, you don't need a permit. Here's the price, go and do it. So my sensibility, I says, it sounds a little bit too funny. So I called the township, and they told me, you need a permit. So I hired a contractor, and he gave me the same type of answer, just put it up. So I called the township, and they said, no, you have to file a permit. So I gave the contractor a down deposit, and then the contractor came back. He came out, he gave me a price, he took the measurements, and he filed for a permit. And then there was a question of the rear, that you needed 50 feet from the end of the aluminum awning, which I did not have. I have approximately 41.5 feet. So that's why I'm here, to get and see if the council adjourn a approval of the variance C for the rear of the yard.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Harris.
You're welcome.
Mr. Hollan?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, so the applicant's here seeking a single C variance for the rear yard setback for the overhang. Kind of how these are written in the ordinances, although it's, some may not see it as an addition to the home, because the roof is attached to the home, it's treated as an addition as to where it has to comply with the setbacks of the principal dwelling. Being in the R20 zone, that requires a 50-foot setback, where the applicant proposes a 40-foot setback, so he's just 10 feet deficient in that rear yard. So just a single C variance. The front porch in the front yard complies with all setbacks and doesn't require any further variances. I just have one question for Mr. Harris. This is an open structure on all sides, right? It won't be enclosed?
That is correct. That's for the front and the rear.
Okay.
It will be open.
Okay. That's all, Chairman.
Thank you. You picked 16 foot for a reason, I'm assuming, right? Is that where the sun?
Yes, that's the end of my pavers.
Oh, okay.
And I want to put a picnic table out there, so have the family over, so nobody would be on top of one another, and I can enjoy it.
Okay, that makes perfect sense. And the same in the front, although you don't need a variance for the front.
The front, I just want to align up with the roof of the garage, so it looks...
So it's going to look...
Like everybody else's overhang in the front, but my house did not come with an overhang, so I don't want to match it.
I will tell you, on the record, but off the record, you're not the first person that's actually appeared before me on this board and some other people with a similar request due to skin cancer, and they wanted to put a roof to protect, it was a woman, to protect her from sunlight. So it's a bright thing that you've done, hopefully, and mitigates your malady.
Yeah, thank you.
I wish you luck. Again, we have to take a vote first.
Yes, of course.
We'll see. Anything you want to tell us? Anything actually right now you want to tell us?
No, no.
Mr. Clancy, you have anything?
I guess my only question would be, in order to make this, let's say you wanted to make this compliant, you'd have to shorten the awning by about 10 feet, and if you wanted it to cover all your pavers, you'd wind up having to rip up about 10 feet of pavers.
Yes.
Yes, it's a bit of a hardship, correct?
Yeah, they, contractors said that. I said, well, then, you know, it doesn't look right. It don't look right.
Okay, thank you.
So again, we're looking at a hardship here, then.
C1, it sounds like, yeah.
Right. I'm going to go to the public on this matter. This is 10 Sutton Court. Number is 5-2024Z for an aluminum overhang in the rear yard. Anyone have comments on it or want to be heard on this matter? No one has, I'll close the public portion. Board members, any one, you find any comments, sir?
No, just thank you for the board.
We thank you for appearing before the board. Absent any questions or comments, I would ask someone that would be in favor of moving the C1 variance.
Andrews, move it.
Is there a second? Izzo? Move the second roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. I wish you good luck with the project and with your health, sir.
I have one more.
Sure.
Can I call the contractor so he can begin work, or I have to receive a letter?
Mr. Hollan's going to advise you.
So at the next meeting, similar to what we did in the beginning meeting, the board will take a vote to memorialize your resolution. Once that memorialization is done, Maureen will get that resolution signed for you, have you come pick it up. Once you have that resolution in your hand, go back to the building department, submit to them copies of that resolution, so that I can re-review the application based on the board's recommendation.
Okay, thank you very much. Next meeting's in like two weeks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck.
Let's take a quick recess. I don't know if the attorney for the applicant is here yet.
He did, he arrived.
He is?
I think he stepped out.
All right, let's just take a quick recess, please. All right, we're back from recess. Uh, the next matter on our agenda this evening, nine dash 2024 Z. NVR Inc., uh, doing business is Ryan Holmes. This is a low, medium-density residential R20, it's block 5,000, lot 20, Fort Farm Road. Deck expansion, this is amended preliminary final site plan with C variances. Bob McGovern is representing the applicant. Let me just read something in on, also on the agenda. Applicant seeks to increase the size of the previously approved decks of all homes within the previously approved major site plan and subdivision. The approved decks are eight by 10, uh, and the proposed decks are 10 by 20.5 feet. Additionally, the applicant seeks a bulk variance to permit maximum pervious coverage, exceed 55% on all three lots, the maximum coverage of 58.3%. Applicant also seeks to build, uh, seeks a bulk variance for the side yard setback requirement for the proposed decks. Mr. McGowan.
Thank you. Good evening. Yes, my name is Bob McGowan. I'm here representing NVR. Um, this is, uh, you know, we spent, uh, many months and hours before the board in getting the project approved, uh, and now that the project is underway, uh, planning has met reality. And the reality that it has met is that there seems to be a stronger preference for the smaller units than the larger ones, but the preference is for the larger decks, not the smaller decks. So, uh, in order to be able to give the, uh, the buyers and homeowners, uh, the greatest ability to maximize the use of their back home, backyard and their, and the back of their home, um, and so that we can avoid what the board, I'm sure, has seen over the years where the builder builds the deck and then the homeowners come in and they say, you know, maybe they don't have a deck or they want a deck and now it's a variance and you got a mess of individual variances. We want to create the situation where they will have the ability to have the size deck that they, the maximum sized deck that fits, that works and gives a maximum enjoyment of the property. So we have the smaller decks and the smaller units. Even the decks on the larger units do not go to the side yard necessarily to the, don't forget, this is a zero lot line, which causes a good part of the variances that we're seeking. If this was not a zero lot line development, we wouldn't have that variance to go to the zero lot line. So we're asking that we be able to have the decks go to the zero lot line as the houses do, so the deck can go straight out from the house and that it can be larger in the back to maximize the use of the backyard. And with that, I can have the engineer come up and begin to explain. Now, let me say one other thing. The plans that we've submitted were basically submitted to give the board an understanding of the different size units and the different sized decks, but we are asking tonight for variances to allow the larger decks to be on all of the units, uh, if the homeowners select that and would like to have that. Uh, and then there are three lots that we need additional variances for and perhaps some setback variances, but we've spoken about that. Our engineer is here. Michael, would you introduce yourself, give your credentials?
Good evening. My name is Michael Wazalaski, a professional licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey. Uh, my license is current and in good standing. I provide a testimony in front of land boards throughout the state, but I don't believe this board.
What's that, Mr. Wazalaski? Can I swear on that?
Just raise your right hand. You solemnly swear any testimony you provide before the board will be the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
Okay, can you just, um, spell your name for me?
Certainly. It's W-E-S-E-L-O.
I'm sorry, I missed the start of that.
No problem.
That's A-I?
S-K-I.
S-K-I, got it. Sorry about that.
I think my voice and the mic do well together.
That's all right.
All right, so I'll turn it over to my exhibit here. This is our...
Why don't you take the portable, if you're gonna, because you won't be on, on mic. I assume that's on.
Testing? All right. This is our deck variance plan that was submitted with the application, same plan that you see on the screen. Uh, quickly to orient you, Port Farm Road, oriented to the south of the project on the right side of the plan. And so as you heard Mr. McGowan speak to in his introduction, uh, the project is requiring, requesting several variances. First, we have the, uh, side yard setback to the zero lot line or the party wall line, if you will, that we're requesting it on all lots on the basis of, as you heard Mr. McGowan say again, the prospective buyers have shown a desire for the larger 10 by 20, 10 by 20.5 decks, excuse me. So despite the fact that this plan shows a few different deck sizes, we are requesting that zero side yard setback on each lot. Uh, next, we have a few instances of rear yard setback. First, in the approximate center of the plan here, we have on lot 23, 24, and 25 and 26, the deck as it's shown on the plan encroaches over the 20-foot rear yard setback. We also have on the other side of Lucy Drive, three areas where the last couple steps encroach over the rear yard setback. And finally, we have the requested variance for impervious coverage that occurs on lots 23, 24, and 25, whereas 55, excuse me, 55% was approved with the prior site plan application and 45% is required. These lots are, have been increased to 58.3% as a result of the proposed deck increase size. Mr. McGowan, that concludes my direct testimony. If you have anything further for me?
No, I have no questions, but certainly if the board has any questions.
Uh, just, uh, one question. First of all, is that, we're gonna mark that exhibit or is it previously been marked? And what are we...
We should mark it for this.
Is A1 appropriate?
A1, yes. Uh, well, what's, what does it say on it? Site plan?
This is the deck variance plan. It's the same plan that was submitted.
Thank you.
And before I go to the professional, our professional, there's going to be different sizes for different homes.
What, there may be.
That's...
Yes, I mean, they'll have an option, but they, they can't go beyond the dimensions that we're asking for, which is 20 by...
And all homes will have a deck.
And all home, well, if they, this is an option. A deck is an option to begin with. They have, they have stairs and some have stairs even to a patio, uh, but the deck is an option that they would have to select.
Mr. Holly.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Uh, yeah, Mr. McGowan, just to clarify, 'cause, um, not all the lots show decks on this plan, so you guys are requesting variance relief for decks on all the lots to give all the lots an option to build up to a 10 by 20 and a half deck?
I, I agree that not all of the, the, not all of the, uh, lots show that there are decks. I believe that, uh, there was room to build decks on each of the lots, uh, and I don't know if you can confirm that or not, Mike, but I believe that, that was my understanding. There was always room. We should, what we did was show decks on the various units, some smaller, some larger, and how they would look and what their size was. But I don't think the intent was that if you wanted a deck, you couldn't have one.
That's correct. And I believe the only variance that would apply to the lots here that aren't currently shown with the deck is that side yard setback to the zero lot line.
Okay. And I know you had said that they may require rear yard setbacks. Um, that 20-foot setback only applies to the principal building, um, so 10-foot is the required setback for the deck. So I don't, there's none that I see that would require rear yard setbacks. I believe it's just side yard setbacks.
Okay, so you do view the decks as an accessory structure?
Correct, yes.
Understood.
We had that discussion. Thank you.
Mr. McGowan, just pull that mic a little closer to you. It's just not...
Yes, I'm sorry.
It's very directional.
I'll move close.
There you go, you got it.
Thanks.
I see him, lot, uh, number 33?
Okay.
There's a 10 by 10 patio there.
Correct.
Is there, is the elevation that would, we couldn't put it, you wouldn't put a deck there?
Uh, the reason there is because this building does not have a basement, so it's a slab-on-grade design, or it would just be a single step out to a patio as opposed to a slightly elevated deck.
So they wouldn't, the homeowner wouldn't want to alter that?
Well, they'd have to step up to the deck, is what I believe, you know, so the thought is that they'd be happier with the patio.
It's like a walkout.
Or put a, put a bigger patio in.
Or, yes, perhaps we could build a, a larger patio, that's true.
Well...
Yes. That was our understanding from the original approval, even though they weren't shown.
Yeah, and some of them, they're not.
Right, that's correct. But there was space in which to accommodate a deck.
It would certainly look as...
Not a large deck necessarily.
Yeah, well, it would look like there's basement. For instance, lot, uh... Yes, nine, 11, uh, that would be in the one, the two-unit twin building, right on Lucy.
Lucy.
Yeah, Lucy and Lola, uh, would be, as you look at the plan to the right, the first one on the corner.
Lot 11 here, the corner lot. I'm sorry, lot, I'm looking at the street number.
Looks like 11 and nine. All right. Is that housing number?
Those are house numbers, yes.
Okay. Uh, I don't see the lot number on who's up.
Those would be lots five and six.
Lots five and six, I see it now. Okay, there's none there, right?
There's no deck shown on this plan, no.
Is there room for them?
Yes, there would be room, again, with the exception of we would still require the zero side yard setback to the zero lot line.
Okay, now, on, uh, four and, three and four, right next to it, there's decks.
Correct.
So why is there not on the other one?
In this case, anything that you see here without a deck is one of the affordable units that does not have a basement. So we go to that same scenario where those are slab-on-grade buildings with a single step out to grade as opposed to an elevated deck from an elevated doorway.
It's like, it's like a walkout, whereas the other ones are a little bit higher up.
Exactly.
These ones are actually at grade.
Yes.
So it wouldn't make sense to put a deck on them.
Correct.
Right. All right, I think I understand that.
Okay. Why would there, why would there be no patios on those?
The envision here was that this, the landing requirement is provided for access and should the homeowner decide to want a patio, each lot was designed, the project was designed to accommodate full impervious coverage for each lot, so there would be no reason that the homeowner then would need to return to the board.
Same thing with lot two and one also. Lot two. I'm curious why one got a patio and none of the other ones did. Why wouldn't you just put a patio on? If it's at grade, you put a patio on.
You're back to this building here at the end of the cul-de-sac?
Well, we could start with that, yeah, sure.
This, this was designed here as such to make the affordable units as affordable as possible. Should the homeowners wish to put in a patio, that's an add-on item, is my understanding.
I think the builder should put that on automatically. With the patio, why would you want the houses looking differently?
Well, you know, that was, that was a lengthy process, of course, when, when we started the, uh, proposal, we were talking about multifamily, uh, to satisfy the COA. Vena was a vigilant, uh, advocate of affordable housing. She wanted to make sure that, uh, as you drove through the community, you would find it very difficult to tell which was affordable and which wasn't. And, and we all agreed with that and, and she certainly deserves a lot of credit for having stood so firmly on that. Um, in answer to your question, however, you, you can't, as you drive past, you're not gonna be able to see the patios in the back. What the builder is trying to do is to certainly satisfy the requirements that were agreed to, but the cost of building houses that are market rate units but are gonna be sold as affordable units is, you know, fairly substantial and, and there are seven units in a relatively small project, uh, that have to be affordable and which we are building is affordable, but the cost of that is pretty substantial.
I don't think it's that costly to put a slab in.
Well, I understand, but they, as he said, the reason is slab is there's no basement. You know, one of the things there was that, again, if, from the outside, it looks the same, but at least the, the cost to deliver it, uh, although more than it would have been if we could have done, you know, any kind of, uh, four-unit, uh, multifamilies, uh, nonetheless, uh, we tried to accomplish some economies and still satisfy the requirements.
Well, I have, I, I can't see, is there a slider for a walkout in the back? I don't know the unit well enough.
We have Representative Ryan Holmes here. There is a door in the back.
So let's give him a patio. If you're given some, I think you should be, uh, uniformed in, in your, in your building.
Obviously, that's beyond my pay grade, so...
Well, mine too, but...
With us tonight is Ken Mills from Ryan Holmes.
Yeah, just place the mic, there you go. Can you raise your right hand for me? You solemnly swear any testimony you provide before the board will be the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
And just state your name for the record?
Ken Mills.
M-I-L-L-S?
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
In your position with Ryan Holmes?
I am their land development manager.
Ken, can we give him a patio?
Well, there's a number of thoughts here. With the affordable housing units being slabs, there's not as much of a ground opportunity for it, uh, that patio to occur.
Just make sure that, yeah, it's very direction.
So I think this is one of the cases where the three-by-three step out, out of the door is the most appropriate for us to provide for them, for them to move in and then make whatever adjustments or alterations they want to do. It's the same way where each of the market rates, not, some of them may not have a deck as well if the customer chooses not to. So I don't know that I want to tell someone who comes in for the affordable home that it might cost a little bit more just because they are being told they have to have a patio that they may not even want. Maybe, maybe they do want to put in something that takes advantage of the contours of the particular lot and maybe there's something of a retaining wall or some flower beds or something else that might make that look a little bit more attractive.
So why did it look so good on lot, uh, 19? To put a 10 by 10 patio on it. Where's 19?
There's your numbers. It's on the...
I think it is.
Yeah, 19 is a market rate and that, that is a raised deck there.
Raised deck, I don't think it is. If you know that, it's just 10 by 10 patio. Are we looking at the same one?
Maybe not, which...
19 is right at the corner of Lucy and Lola?
Lola? No, it's down at the end of the bubble, at the, uh, the end of the cul-de-sac.
He's referencing, uh, 33.
Oh. Lot 19, house 33.
There you go, keep going. Yep, that's the one.
Okay, that is a, that is a market rate attached to an affordable home. Not, no, the, the market rate's gonna be...
No, 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 I'm talking about level. The land, the level, same level.
The, the land, yes, the land will be the same, but the, the lots, the homes themselves will be slightly different.
So I get one in 33 if I buy it, but the guy next door, 31, doesn't get one?
Well, remember, it's, you have the option to...
I understand.
Right, you have the option to purchase.
I, I fully understand.
Okay. Well, the, the, the customer that chooses to buy it, the next door, could do that. They, they, they can, if, if that's something that...
Well, you put it on, I, is, no, I have the only, I, I was there, I just saw the one building.
Mm-hmm.
And the land looks great. I, I'm, kudos to the way you've developed so far. But you chose to put one on here, but you chose not to put one next door, and I don't, that's not sold either. None of them are sold, right?
Right.
I, I, I think the chairman is, is interested in seeing the affordable people get a patio, if they would like one, at least, and, and not have to upcharge them for it. We got seven units, though, that have to be addressed that way.
Why don't I, let, let's see if, uh, the flavor of the rest of the board here, where they stand. On my left, uh, Mr. Izzo, any comments as to these? Well, yeah, well, some continuity here, I mean...
So lot number 20 versus lot 19. Lot 19 has a 10 by 10 patio with a smaller yard, if I was to read this correctly. Lot 20, home, home number 31, has a longer yard with a smaller little landing. To me, it's backwards. Like, he's got the room on, on lot 20 to be bigger.
Mr. Stoner, any comment?
Can you...
Mr. Scogno?
...decide, I don't know, is it the fire?
Didn't think I needed one. But can the funds be put aside? In other words, if the buyer then decides he does want that, and then you would provide that for them?
Well, I would defer to our planner to find out how that fits with the UHAC laws. There might be something that we can do that, there might be a way to do that.
So instead of them wanting to have a garden, like you suggested?
Right.
They turn, they want to have a patio, but they don't want them to pay, they want you to pay for it.
Right.
Can that be done?
I, again, I need to defer on that, that, that might be a litigious question that I'm not capable of answering that.
Okay, thank you.
But yes.
Can I ask another question? Go right ahead.
If, if the home doesn't have the larger deck, it's becoming a, a privilege of the buyer to make that decision. Does the buyer have to come before us to get approved for that?
Our goal is to make each lot have the opportunity for the largest deck possible so that if someone comes and wants a smaller one, we build that. And then if later in a few years, they'd say, hey, you know what, I kind of want that bigger deck, they don't have to come in front of you, they can just get a permit and build it. So we're kind of taking the sins of the whole site and asking really only going to be a little bit of relief in the overall scheme of the package. However, I think that to save you from doing this thirty-four times, that's all, that's really what the purpose.
The reason they came, you know, is to get that done so they don't have to worry about setbacks. So if we grant that relief, they can go up to, I guess, you're going, eighteen, uh, twenty, uh, ten by twenty point five, rather than having ten by tens or something smaller. That, too, would be permissive, up two.
Up two.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Because I saw there's a fourteen by fourteen in there.
Right, right.
That's an irregular.
Right, and each one.
So, yeah, and then we would, right, and.
No uniformity, it, it could be.
Right, you, well, like in any neighborhood, you could have a bigger.
Yeah, and sometimes that builds character.
Built on the back of your house than mine.
And then some may have step decks and some may put a patio below the deck and give the opportunity to make it unique.
And, and of course, they're, they want to expand the impervious coverage, up to fifty-eight from fifty-five max, so just keep that in mind.
On the three lots?
Yeah, yeah.
And, yeah, and that may not even be needed if the smaller homes sold there. Again, this is a worst-case scenario.
I understand.
Yes, sir.
When did Ryan Holmes take over?
On this?
Almost from the beginning, in other words, once it was approved, Ryan was already in contract to be the builder, so.
I didn't see that until I went. It's been a couple of years. So, so you like the idea of putting the patios where they need to be?
Excuse me?
Do you like the idea of putting the patios where they should be? If my neighbor has one, I think I should have one too.
What if the, wait, wait, if the neighbor doesn't have one?
Well, in this case, he does. Nineteen has one, he's got the ten-by-ten, I step out my back door if I, if I number thirty-one, I step on a three-by-three.
That's it.
If, can, can we agree to a ten-by-ten for, for all the affordables? Would that be, and, and that, again, that allows room for other stuff back there, but ten-by-ten is a, is what's shown here, for instance, on that one lot.
You're being picked up.
On the number thirty-three.
You would do, do ten-by-ten for the affordables as well?
Again, I want to make sure that.
As long as we're not having any.
Right, I, I don't want to conflict with other laws that.
If you'd like, I'll keep, I'll keep us in session, you can step outside, I'll give you a couple of minutes.
I, I don't know the answer to that, I don't do enough in.
Well, I, I would like you to get.
No, no, I know, and I, I'm not trying to get away from that. Is there any problem with giving? Yeah, why don't you come up?
Yep.
You solemnly swear any testimony you provide before the board will be the truth and the whole truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, just have a seat and.
Thank you.
Make sure the microphone's right in front of you and pick you up. What's your name, please?
Good evening, it's Christine Nazzaro, N.A.Z.Z.A.R.O., Cofone, C.O.F.O.N.E. Business address is one-twenty-five Half Mile Road, Suite 200, Red Bank, New Jersey.
Word is very familiar with Ms. Cofone, she just appeared before our last meeting or two meetings ago.
Yes.
Obviously, we accept her credentials.
Yes, and I'm also a court-appointed Affordable Housing Special Master. So if I can understand the chair, Mr. Chairman's question, it is, can you require NVR to put the patio on the seven affordable housing units? Is that, that's your ask, is that, is that permissible? So I would say that that.
Well, I know it's permissible.
Is it permissible or, you know, the, to require it, though, now what you're doing is you have a situation where you are requiring them to do something on the affordable units.
It's suggesting.
That they're not doing on the market rate units. So if the goal of that is uniformity, we're not really achieving our goal because there's no guarantee that those market rates are going to exercise the option to spend the extra money to have the deck. So if that's our goal, the other thing I would tell you is that I struggle a little bit as a court-appointed master and I serve as a master in about three dozen communities as a special master. So what that means is I sit and I help mediate these, these plans all the time. It's, it, to me, strikes to, starts to run a little bit of cost generative, unnecessarily cost generative, when we're requiring to do things for the Mount Laurel units that we're not doing for the market units. So I, I, as a special master, don't have a problem with leaving it as an option. My understanding is that the whole motivation of this application was to give the prospective residents of this project the option to have decks of varying sizes that suit their lifestyle and needs. So we're not, the reason we're coming, asking for a blanket variance is we can't tell you what all these, we, we can only tell you what we're sort of seeing in the marketplace and we're trying to get enough flexibility to respond to that so that these thirty-four homeowners don't have to come back to you if they do want a little bit bigger of a deck because of the interesting way that these lots are set up with zero lot lines, right? The existing structures, the, the property is right on the lot line, unlike a traditional single-family home.
Where, while you're here.
Right, so.
You don't have to waste your time on that one.
So that's, that's my opinion on it. I think if, if I were making a recommendation and I were the master making a recommendation on this project and we were back before we had our housing plan, I would make the recommendation that if they're optional on the market rates, they should be optional on the Mount Laurel units as well.
You're, you're testifying tonight as a planner, right?
As a planner.
Not as, not as a master?
Not as a master, right, I'm here tonight as a.
I just wanted to make sure we had the difference.
Yes, I'm here tonight as a, as a planner.
Okay, we thank you for your comments.
You're welcome. Should I do some testimony on the variances or is this what I'm here for?
Shall we have to give the planning testimony or is there?
By all means.
Questions on that?
So statutorily, I think the board can grant this variance relief under the C1 and C2 criteria. I read the resolution and reviewed that of the original application when this use variance was granted. I was not the planner on that, that was Dave Roberts, but what he testified to was that he believed that the, the variance relief advanced criteria A, promoting the general welfare as it is an inclusionary project. Criteria G, having sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses, given the fact that this was an irregular triangular lot, but we were still able to develop it, providing proper access and the layout was efficient. And then also criteria I, creative development techniques, desirable environment and creative development design techniques. Statutorily, the board only has to find that one or more purposes of the land use law is advanced to grant the application. Those three were cited on the original use variance, I believe they're still appropriate to be contemplated by the board. And I certainly think that the variances can be granted with no substantial detriment to the public good or the zone plan. In my opinion, they allow the prospective residents of this project to maximize the usable yard areas, which is certainly a noble zoning goal. And I think that this variance relief can be granted with no substantial detriment to the public good or zone plan.
Any comments, Mr. Holligan?
The only kind of concern, I think, is what if, speaking generally just on the market rate units for now, because how, well, first of all, what's the, do you know the elevation of these decks?
I would have to defer to Michael.
Okay, so if one of the units opted to have one of the raised decks and one of them opted to not have the raised decks, there could potentially be some privacy concerns there or even if they're both raised decks and, you know, they're, but up against each other, they're potentially, I just maybe see more of a concern if one unit were to opt for it and one unit would opt out of it. It's really only, the only comment I have.
I think they could do that today, though, that that would be an option, this is just really about the size of the decks. I think that that is how the project was approved.
I got the impression, and perhaps I'm wrong, that, for instance, the building you have sitting there right now, if you put the deck on the backside, it obviously would go. Would you not just put a privacy wall right in between?
We will, we will, we have on our.
That's what I thought.
Proposed plans to place a privacy that's approximately six feet tall.
Yeah.
Yes.
Which is normal to, to see.
Yes, sure, it is.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Holligan?
Uh, no, Chairman.
Ms. Andrews, you had a comment?
Yeah, just, please correct me if I'm wrong, this is how I understand it, they're buying a house. If someone wants a deck or a patio, that's an option. Everyone is not getting a deck, everybody's not getting a patio.
That's exactly right.
So it doesn't make any difference whether it goes with the affordable units or not. They aren't going to be overlooked simply because somebody does decide to have a deck.
Correct.
If I decide to have a swimming pool in my house and the neighbor next door doesn't have one, it doesn't mean that everybody has to have a swimming pool. So what we're voting on basically is you want a broad spectrum for the approval if and when they want to have a deck. If they don't have it and someone sells it, does that still stay in effect for the new owner? So that's, it, it's just, the, the renderings on here of a deck are just for the purpose of a rendering.
Correct.
Nothing to do with this one's getting a deck, that one's not getting a deck.
You understand correctly.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, this is, this is the preventive future as the community grows and becomes established.
Spot on, you understand exactly as we're proposing it. Thank you. You're welcome.
Getting back to lot nineteen, you, you're placing a ten-by-ten patio there, right? You are.
I, I.
You have it on the plans, I'm asking you, are you or are you not?
That's an option that we can do.
Again, I.
We would like, or.
That home is not fit to have a deck, is what you're saying, correct? Because it's a walkout.
It's a walkout, that is correct, yeah, it's ground level.
Got it.
But again, all of the decks and even the patios are there for demonstration of what it would look like, not, not because it's definitely going to be built.
You have a question?
I was, I had a question earlier about if there's no patio and then the buyer wants a patio, that cost is up to who?
In other words, the builder is offering that as an option. They're going to offer, I, I think, two or three different sized decks.
So when I come in to buy the house and there's no patio, you will then say to me, do you want a patio? We'll put that in for you?
Almost all of these houses are going to be built after they already have a contract in place. The contract, the, the sales activity has been good, but Brian Holmes, the chairman asked before, you know, when Ryan Holmes take over.
And the cost of the patio will be from the builder?
Well, what I want to explain is that the, that the original developer still owns the property. Ryan Holmes takes down the lots, two, three, you know, two, they're duplexes, so they got to take down at least two at a time, but they take down maybe four or six at most. And then the original developer still owns the rest of the lots. And Ryan Holmes doesn't take them down until they have a contract to purchase those homes or they're confident that by the time they get fairly along under construction, that they will have a contract. During the contract period is when the buyer selects their options, both interior and exterior. So they will not be buying the house and then having to add a deck later. They'll know whether they're going to have a deck or a patio or stairs or whatever they're going to have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and that.
Total build-out would not, would not occur until they're all bought.
That is correct, that is correct, that's the Ryan Holmes system.
Go ahead.
No, that's it, I have nothing further.
Mr. Glancy, anything?
I'm just looking at, at what variances are actually being requested. It looks like we need, if it's just for the deck, I think it's just a, it would be a minimum accessory side yard. Is that, is that your understanding of this?
Right, yes, yep.
Which I don't see in the original approval. I see minimum side yard setback of zero, obviously they're duplexes.
I, I believe when they got their original approval, those ten-by-text were, the ten-by-ten decks were conforming, correct? I, I want to say.
Yes.
I believe we showed them all as the one-style deck that was more than the side yard setback distance.
Hmm, because I think those decks are situated more in the middle of the unit.
That's correct, yeah, they, they honor the side, side yard setback.
Okay.
So I think the correct application, the correct request is for zero setback on a minimum, on a minimum side setback on an accessory structure.
Correct.
Correct, plus the lot coverage variance on the three lots where we are proposing fifty-eight point three, I believe, where fifty-five was approved. We have just three lots that we show a maximum build-out.
Do you have the actual lot numbers?
I do, yes.
Yeah, just if you'd be so kind as to read them off.
So I believe it is lots twenty-five, lots twenty, oh, the twenty-three and twenty-one, correct? Twenty-five, twenty-three, twenty-one? Oh, the lot number, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know, the house numbers are on there, kind of throwing people off.
Really, you have to put those numbers one off, are you kidding me? Lot twenty-three, so strike that, it's lot twenty-three, lot twenty-four and lot twenty-five.
Got it.
Thank you.
All right, and that's for fifty-eight point three percent, where fifty-five had previously been.
Permitted.
Yes.
And that's maximum impervious?
Yes.
Is that your calculation of the impervious coverage with those decks on those lots? The twenty-three? Okay, so should that applicant want, and that's with the largest deck, with the twenty by ten? Okay, so should they want to add a patio, something later in the future, they potentially would have to come back to the board?
If they go beyond the deck, yes.
Okay.
With that big deck.
Okay.
And then they would be max.
And then all of the other lots, remind me, what was the approval for lot coverage with the original, on all the other lots? Fifty-five, okay. That's it, Chairman.
One more question, so the patio and the decks, they're considered upgrades? Like you go into your kitchen, you want a cabinet this way, I want that cabinet, and you pay for that?
That is correct.
So I, I want the deck, so I have to pay for that.
Yes.
I want a patio, so I have to pay for that, so you're not providing that on your bill?
We're, we're providing that as an option, as you were saying, you go into a kitchen, this is the standard. If you'd like this higher level, you can have that, or you can have the maximum level.
But most homes have a patio and a little concrete patio back there.
Well, yeah, they, they have a landing pad, really, they have stairs, if, if there is an elevation difference, they have stairs to a landing pad, which is like three-by-three, something like that. You can't just walk into the mud, but, you know, you don't really have a usable space.
So if they choose not to exercise their option to upgrade and get a patio or a deck, then they will have a little three-by-three landing out there. So everybody will have that regardless of if they choose to exercise their option to purchase an upgrade for a deck or patio.
Well, they have to have that, it's the way to get out of the house.
Right.
Will, will a, a unit be built only when both sides of the duplex are sold?
That's correct.
So I have to wait, if I want one, I got to wait to the next person next to me. All right, option only then, is what, that's what you're telling me?
Chairman, if I can just make one more comment. Typically, like developments like these where there's that whole bulk schedule, we typically don't, usually every lot will fall under the same bulk criteria, right? Like, going back to the lot coverage, right? If you guys are requesting fifty-eight point three for only three of the lots, it may be beneficial if the board would consider, should they grant that variance, grant that to every single one of the lots? You know, that way, it should someone exceed that limit but keep it under the fifty-eight point three, they wouldn't have to return to the board. And, you know, i- if we're granting it for three to make it more uniform across the whole development, you know, maybe that's something that the board may consider.
I thought that was the purpose of it, I didn't know it was limited to three, perhaps I read wrong, but.
Well, we.
I know it's going to only affect that, but so you don't have the problem with the people coming back in, I would suggest.
That's an excellent suggestion, we, we only saw the problem in three, but sure, to make it uniform and easy, that would be better.
That's the whole purpose for this, so people aren't coming back here.
Yep, absolutely.
All right, so the affordable housing units are going to be treated the exact same as the regular market value sales, correct?
Correct.
What is the maximum impervious that's under the ordinance?
Forty-five, I think.
Yeah, in the R20 zones, forty-five, yep.
And there was a previous approval for fifty-five.
Correct.
This is a slight increase.
Yep.
Yeah.
You have no further witnesses, right?
No.
Uh, let me go to my left again, we'll go, questions for the planner? None? None? Good. Ladies, good on this side. And Mr. Clancy?
No, I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't I go to public portion and see what, if you have any comments, right? If that's okay with you?
Sure, please, thank you.
9-2024Z, location's Port Farm Road. This is mandatory preliminary and final site plan, C variances regarding maximum lot coverage and decks. Anybody want to be heard in this matter, please raise your hand. Lady in the white, would you come forward first? And then I have two others, and I'll get to all of you. Yeah, if you could lower that a little?
Or take it out?
Thank you for the help. I appreciate that. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just state your name.
Deborah Marquez.
And Board Attorney will swear you in.
You solemnly swear any testimony you provide before the board will be the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
Thank you. How do you spell Marquez?
M-A-R-Q-U-E-Z.
Thank you.
Hi, I live at 37 Brewster Circle, and I am the Homeowner Association President for the Meadowlands at Old Bridge.
You appeared before us on a matter when this application was...
Yes, on Zoom, absolutely.
Yes, I recognize you.
So I kind of, you know, know what's going on, but, you know, a lot of this, I'm going to tell you the truth, is Greek to me because I'm not an engineer. I do know a lot of people are upset. This is literally in our backyard. Especially, I look out my window, I see everything, and I'm worried about our privacy. I mean, it's already, this whole development has been so evasive. Thousands of trees knocked down. I couldn't sit outside last year in my backyard, and I'm not exaggerating, the dust, the dirt. It's been terrible. My car, soot all over it all the time. But now I'm worried about what they want to do with these decks, how high. I know you were talking about privacy among them. What about the privacy of all the people directly behind this? And I mean, 30 feet is nothing. It's nothing. I look out my window, I see everything that's going on, and I have a fence and everything. So I'm really concerned, and I'm here representing all the people of Old Bridge, of Brewster Circle, and what's, you know, how high are these decks going to be and how it's going to affect our life and our privacy? You know, they're talking about prospective buyers. Well, we are taxpayers. We already live here. You know, and I really do respect you guys a lot for all the decisions you have to make all the time, these technical decisions, what's right, what's wrong. But I just want you to really consider how this impacts our life. I can, just the traffic, the street isn't even wide enough. I'm going to tell you the truth, there's going to be an accident. Engineering really needs to come in and ask some of the homeowners if they will sell their land, because you can't even get up and down Port Farm Road, never mind when all those homes come in and children playing. You know, I'm all for growth and all that, but not when it directly impacts our life negatively. And it really does have a negative impact on our life. So I really wish you would consider, you know, I think every homeowner, you know, they're pretending that they're here for your interest so that homeowners don't have to come with variances. I don't, I don't buy that. Their interest is selling the homes and the bottom line is making a profit here. That's, that's what their interest is. They're not interested in, oh, people coming, listen, I didn't put a deck on my property till like 10 years later. So not everybody has the means to do that right away, you know? So let people decide what they want for themselves. But my main concern is how high are these decks going to be and how, how far are they going to be close to Brewster Circle? Because we are right there. They put up a little fence and we're right there. We're right there. So that's what I want to know, how far their backyard is going to be, close to us, you know? And it really does affect us and our everyday life. So if, you know, you guys could really help us out and really think this through, we would really appreciate it. That's, that's all I'm going to say.
I'll make a couple of quick comments. I don't know that they're going to be beneficial to you, but obviously, this is a build that has been approved.
Absolutely, I know that.
So we know that that's, that's going to...
I know that, but now why can't they follow what's been regulated to them already? Why do they need more variances? That's what I'm saying.
The deck level would be at the level where there would be an exit from the home. If you have a deck on your home, it's probably on your first floor level.
Absolutely, right.
That would be the level.
It's not going to be up high?
I would, I'd never heard of anybody putting a deck on a second floor, but that's not what, I don't think they're talking about. From, from the plan, all they're doing is trying to make the decks look uniformed, probably on the duplexes, with a courtesy kind of panel in between. So that's not going to change anything from what they really did, what was approved. Impervious coverage, what you're talking about is, it's the amount of area that can be covered by ordinance.
Okay.
So we're talking in percentages, you're talking 3%, it's kind of what they call de minimis. It's not really a large amount. They were already approved at 55.
Right.
They want to go to 58. So for you and I, we wouldn't notice the difference.
Right.
Professionals would notice the difference.
Okay.
And by ordinance, they have to come here.
Of course.
Those decks are going to be there whether they were, they're going to, they were 8 by 10s, or now they're going to look...
Now they're 10 by 20.
Well...
Yeah.
Personally, I think for vision, I think you'd rather, if you were going to see it at all, you'd probably want to see something uniformed. That was what, one of the questions I was asking before, that things looked uniform.
Absolutely, I like your questions.
So I did go by just the other day, and I, and I did travel through, JCPN was in there for some purpose with a truck up on the, up on the bubble, and, I mean, it, it looks exactly what, like they said what they were going to do.
Yeah.
I can't...
But I'm going to tell you the truth, I'm upset that, I was hoping this would be done by the summer, you know, that now we have to wait...
It's economy driven.
I know, but we have to wait for each unit to be sold in order, because this impacts our life, the noise, the banging, the dirt, you know, it really does. It really does.
The quicker, the quicker it gets done...
Absolutely.
Everyone can get back to some normalcy.
Absolutely. You know, at least we know what's there then, you know? But, you know...
The board always has, has in its mind the effects of any build on neighboring properties. That's why they're forced to put proofs on the record and resolutions are written, so they have to comply with them. Ms. Cuffin spoke at length here tonight concerning issues that have to happen, issues that are permissive versus mandatory. And she's 100% right. She's a specialist in her field.
Right.
And she's a very well-known planner throughout this state. I was just trying to look for some uniformity for, for the neighborhood. You're going to see some of the rear builds, but depending on where you live on Brewster, you may see nothing.
No, I'm going to see it, definitely.
Okay, I don't know personally where you live, but I'm just saying, some will, some won't. But all builds are economy driven. And yes, they don't do this not to make a profit. That's the society we live in.
Of course.
If we want a home, we have to pay for it. They're not given away free. I guarantee you, they would like to sell all of them tomorrow and have them built by next week. Would I be right?
Amen.
Okay. And everybody knows that. Unfortunately, that's not reality in life.
Yeah.
I feel for you, but I don't know if you were there first, or how about the, the build across the street from you? Just up from you a little, that, that...
Seat of view.
Seat, yeah.
They were there first, I think.
They came first and you came, I bet you they were mad at you guys, too.
Probably, probably.
And I know, and it is, it's not, it's not right. I, I fully understand it. But this was an approved application.
Okay, I know that, that I know.
And right now, they're not asking, they're really not asking for anything more than what they were granted.
My main concern was I didn't know how high they were going to be.
And in actuality, no, nothing has changed on that.
Okay.
And no, a deck would just look like any normal deck that someone would put in the back of their room.
All right.
So don't be alarmed by that. The height isn't going to change any.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, I was concerned. I didn't want people to be looking over our fence.
We think about that all the time. Every member of this board, particularly when homes are close together.
Yeah.
Where's the privacy left?
Right.
We understand that. But again, this has been an approved application. They're actually trying to help the future homeowners by not having to come back here before this board.
Oh, I, I get that.
If they have a little tiny deck and all of a sudden I have four people over and I can't stand there, gee, I wish I could have had another 10 feet. Well, this is to alleviate that. That's why they're here before the board. So it's a one trip that the builder is doing versus having the homeowners come back here 24 times.
Okay, thank you.
We appreciate your comment, and we're thoughtful of all of our neighbors here and all of our residents at all times.
I hope so. Thank you.
We are, ma'am.
Thanks for the love.
Sir, you're next. Once again, you probably have to lift that microphone up a little bit.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, you just turn that...
Yeah, it's got to come up. There you go. All right. Could you just raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear any testimony you provided before this board will be the truth and the whole truth? Yep. Okay, put your hand down. Just state your name for the record, please. Gregory Riggleman. Gregory? Yep. And what was the last name? Riggleman, R-I-G-G-L-E-M-A-N. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
I oppose the, making the buildings any bigger. Closer, there you go.
Yeah, thanks. It's very directional, you almost, yeah, speak right into it.
How about now?
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, I've come to oppose that making the buildings, decks, anything any bigger. Anybody who knows about Port Farm Road, it's always, it all goes downhill. So us on the other end of Brewster, down on the other end of Port Farm, there has never been drainage, there's no storm drains, no nothing. So now, since they've cleared the land, all the water does roll downhill. I've never had water in my basement, I have never had anything. Now, because all the water rolls downhill and it's not being stopped by them, it's now making it bad on our end down here because there's so much water. I have, actually, my wife sent the emails to the town. I had the town come out and look at the storm drains, the tension pond, because it has nowhere to go. And, you know, if you're building, making the buildings and decks bigger, there's nowhere, you're taking away the grass and everything else. You already cleaned the trees. There, there's nowhere for the water to absorb. So now it's just going to make it worse on our end.
So you're saying that...
And I have hundreds of pictures from every time it rains.
Are you on Brewster as well?
No, I'm on the opposite side of Port Farm, down by Cheesequake.
Okay. So you're saying water's flowing towards Cheesequake Road?
Yeah, would you like to, I could show you everything.
No, I, I don't...
Yeah.
I drive through there. I know it does pool down there.
Not pool. Since they started, nothing pools. Every time it rains, it flows down the road. And not even that, without the silt fence and everything, all the silt now has filled up the tension pond and filled up the roads, the road floods bad. And so they told me actually, during the engineer, when I came down to the town, they actually had someone come out, and they said that, that the tension pond is actually on the higher end of the, of the road. So the water's not even getting to the tension pond, it's coming right down. And I'll show you my, my yard, the two yards across the street are lakes. And I'm talking, I've never had water, I've been there since 2002. And the house I bought was my wife's parents' house, and they never had water in there. And we've, they've been here since, I mean, years, since the 70s.
I'm going to have somebody check into that because the tension pond is built by spec.
Okay.
And it's not supposed to be able to release the water there. Now, I'm, I'm, in no way do I disagree that it's there, because again, I drive, I traverse that road, and I have to drive slowly to go through water out there. You're saying it's a direct result of that?
I have, like I said, I've been there, and we even put the addition on, I've not, I had a walkout, like a walkout door for the basement. I had the town come out, I've been approved, I had everything for all this because of the fact I've never had water. Now, it used to, there's no storm drain by the tension pond, so where the road goes in, there's no way for the water to get down. So first, they cleared the pipeline, the property of pipeline that goes up Cheesequake.
Right.
So now that side is all created, falling in. Now, since this, it's just, all it does is pool. My aunt lives across the street, and she's never had water in her yard. And I'll tell you, the lakes, the wood, the water in the woods itself goes above, you can't even see like where the, the leaves or anything, like it's above it at the end of that road.
And your comments are, you're, you're thinking that it's as a result of undermining that land?
Yeah. If you, the more we build, the more the builder, the bigger the decks are, there's nowhere for it to take the water. It's going to make it worse.
Well, no, the decks are raised, so there's only...
But when you're coming, when you're coming down and it's raining, the building, it has to go somewhere. It goes in the drains, it goes in the storm drains, it all goes somewhere.
Well, decks don't normally cause any kind of flooding issue whatsoever, even if they're only here for an extension of size, not height, and none of them are on ground level. So I don't, I've never heard of water being...
We make the buildings bigger, where's the water?
Buildings are not getting bigger.
You're making the decks twice the size.
Well, they had approvals on 10 by eights, they're going to extend their linear, run right across.
Shame on me for prior, that it's not, I didn't know this was going to happen.
No, no. No, no.
Because I never had this.
They're not coming... They already had that permission. Nothing is changing in the size of the building or the properties. What they're asking for is relief from impervious coverage on three of the lots. Because by extending a deck onto it, it's an accessory issue with side yard. So you're putting more coverage on grass that would be otherwise impervious. So that's all they're here for. Nothing else is changing, except they wanted to extend the size of the deck so homeowners didn't have to come back before us to do that. And the impervious coverage has gone from fifty-five percent to fifty-eight, which, as I explained, unless you're a builder, you wouldn't know the difference. And I wouldn't know the difference. Professionals know the difference.
But at the same time, we've been told that...
I will have someone look in... I'm gonna try and get to someone to find out why that water's coming down there. If it's a result of their project, then they have to mitigate that. If it's a result of something else, they do not.
Well, they added drainage up there. There's never... They didn't look at the exterior area, that the effect that that was gonna have. And now we have... I'm saying, there's nowhere.
I'm not saying that it is or isn't. I... I'm not an engineer, so I wouldn't know that, but our engineering department would have to look at that, figure that out. And I'm gonna get that word to find out why this project is being built.
Correct. And that's my point, was the town sent me to the engineer, and we still haven't had an answer.
But I assure you and everybody else, buildings are not getting taller. They're not getting wider. They're not getting smaller. They're the exact same size that was approved by this board. Nothing is changing on them. No additions, no extras, size of the decks. That's it. So they're still ten wide. They're just getting longer against the rears of the homes. If they... If people chose... Choose to put one in. It's totally optional. I thought the homes were being built and coming with it. I was wrong. They're built to spec, and they're built one at a time. Now, I hear now.
Would you like me to... Is there... Like, I mean, at the end...
You can certainly call the engineering department. I have your name.
I did. We actually... My wife's name is Jeanette. She's emailed. Actually, like I said, I went to the building. They actually had me send pictures, like multiple dates, everything of the river and everything.
I'm gonna ask Dan to help me out because he is actually a little employee of the township, whereas we're just...
If you're gonna hang out after the meeting, come see me. I'll give you my business card, and then you can call me in the morning.
All right. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you for bringing the board's attention.
Thank you.
All right. Lady in the back, did you want to be heard?
No.
Okay. All right. Seeing no one else in the courtroom, I'm gonna close the public portion.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make one comment. I agree with everything you say. I thank you for your comments. The only thing that I will correct a little bit is that some of the houses may actually be smaller, as I said. We're finding a preference for the smaller unit style rather than larger, so that actually some of the footprints that we've shown and had approved may shrink, so...
Could shrink, but they're not gonna get bigger.
They're not gonna get bigger.
And that's what we want him to know.
Absolutely. The deck is gonna be higher, bigger, and the deck is very close to the ground.
If you make them smaller, that's... Yeah.
Yep.
That's up to you. That's up to the build.
Correct.
Go ahead. You have anything else, Mr. McGowan?
I have nothing else to offer. If anyone has questions...
Yeah, let me just see how the board's sitting here. I think what we're gonna look to do is keep the three lots at fifty-eight.
Okay.
All right?
Sure.
Only, without doing a blanket throughout.
Okay.
All right, because some of them aren't even gonna reach it.
Yeah.
So if it only applies to the three lots, we'll do as proposed on your application.
That's fine.
If there's an approval.
Okay, yes.
And then... The decks do a max of ten by twenty-five, right?
Yes.
Any final questions? I'd like to get a feel of the board before we call for a vote. I'm gonna ask Mr. McGowan if there's going to be a vote. Satisfied with all the information? Okay. Mr. Stoner, satisfied? Go ahead.
Dan? I was just curious. What, with the grading of the property, what would be the highest deck? Like, just tell me how high it's gonna be off the ground.
That I don't know. I posed that question to the engineer. Trying to count the...
They said it's a slope, so I'm just kinda curious. Is there an average of what it's gonna be off the ground?
And what's the average of the first floors?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that question? What's the average of the first... Height of the first floors?
Not the slabs, the homes.
The site has quite a bit of terrain to it.
Yeah, I know. It's a high slope.
So the homes that are along the bottom of the picture will have almost a four to five feet of elevation. The other ones that are facing up, the rears facing uphill, will be very, very close to the first floor elevation. So there won't be much there. The one... The two that are gonna face the basin, they will have elevation also because of the contour of how the basin works.
So...
Does that answer the question?
I looked at Lot One, and usually if no elevation's provided, I will count the steps with typically eight-inch risers. So it looks like Lot One has nine steps. That would make it approximately six feet tall off grade. Is that accurate? Somewhere plus or minus?
It was about sixty inches, but it might be a little higher there.
Okay.
And the six lots that are... I don't know what lot numbers are... Facing the retaining wall, that retaining wall stands over six feet tall also. So there's a level of privacy for the neighbors, which will allow for people to be on their rear decks without being seen or probably not even heard from the neighbors, which is helpful.
Just to point out that Brewster Circle is higher than this development, and all of the decks will be off the ground floor, the first floor.
Yeah, yeah.
So there are no raised decks.
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, absolutely. Am I right? Any questions? Ms. Testaverde, anything? Ms. Andrews?
No, she asked the same question.
Counselor?
No, I think we've covered everything on...
Okay, you rest. Are you gonna ask for a vote, right?
Please.
May I just interject? I am sorry.
No, go ahead.
You mentioned ten by twenty point five max. What if a resident in the future did wanna extend their deck or... No?
They need a variance for that, and they should. They gotta be happy.
Okay, well, that's the biggest one we wanna do, but...
Chairman, I could potentially answer.
That's on them.
That's on them. Absolutely.
I can potentially answer that question. So should... Being that they're seeking approval for a ten by twenty and a half, should an applicant propose something bigger at a later date? As long as it complies with all the bulk standards that are approved at part of the application, they wouldn't necessarily have to come back to the board. Should one of them, you know, further encroach into the rear yard setback than the ten feet that's allotted? Should they go over the lot coverage? Then they would have to possibly come back.
Excellent point. Yeah. As long as the zero lot line is granted, that cures a lot of the problems.
Right. And I don't think that was... I've been through... I've been checking these previous resolutions while we've been sitting here and going through this. I don't think the... I don't know, just it wasn't addressed or it didn't make it in, but it's an accessory setback that's needed, and it was never really captured. So it's kinda either way, you need this, it sounds like. Even with the decks that you had before, it looks like you might have been in the same boat, because I don't see one in here, so...
Well, the decks before didn't go to the zero lot line.
The decks before did not go to the zero?
No, they did not. No, they...
So the way they're being extended now is what brings that into contemplation?
Yes.
Okay. That... I appreciate the clarification.
Sure.
So we see variance for zero, zero-foot setback, and we have also for the three lots, the maximum impervious. That's lots twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. They have... Forty-five is what's permitted. Fifty-five has been the previous approval. They're asking for an increase up to fifty-eight point three on those three lots. And...
Twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, right?
That's what we have. And I believe that's it.
We forgetting anything?
I don't think so. Thank you. Christine, did we forget anything?
I don't think so. It's been well-covered.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's do the C, and then we can amend it preliminary and final, right?
Yeah.
So as to the C, is someone interested in moving it? That would be for the coverage and the maximum coverage and the size... Upping the size of the proposed decks to a max of ten by twenty point five. Scogno, move it. Is there a second?
Andrew's second.
Moved in second. Roll call, please. As to the C.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Amended preliminary site plan. Someone gonna move it?
Oh, Chevalier, I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second, Stoner.
Roll call. Amended preliminary.